Starting momentarily. So we have the next item on the agenda, item five. Janet, could you please read that into the record?
Item five, owner applicant Jefferson 10 Investors LP, file number PLN 2011 00044, location 4057 Jefferson Avenue, Emerald Lake Hills.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. The project before you is a major subdivision that requires a mitigated negative declaration, as well as grading permit, street name change assignment, and lot line adjustment. I'll go into a little bit more detail later, but there's revision in regards, clarification regarding the amount of trees to be removed. It's not 63, it is 35. So, the site is located in the unincorporated Emerald Lake Hills area of San Mateo County, along Jefferson Avenue. The site is a 3.8 acre former horse stable site with a single-family dwelling at the north end. The site is partially sloped and has a sizable willow stand at the eastern end. A Royal Ojo de Agua, a tributary of the Redwood Creek, flows from the southern edge to, southern edge of the project site. Here's a static view of what you just saw with a few items that I just mentioned, including the horse corrals, a single-family residential, existing single-family dwelling, the willow stand, and a tributary on the lower end of the image there. So, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the lot into nine lots, three of which take access directly off of Jefferson, and the remaining six lots access the private cul-de-sac that will have the name Wicca Ranch Court. In order to prepare the site for development, 9,887 cubic yards of grading will be required. Staff has reviewed the site for compliance to the county's general plan, zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, as well as grading ordinance, and have found the proposed subdivision in compliance with each. In order for the lots to maintain the minimum lot, minimum required lot size within the residential hillside zoning district, the applicant is also requesting a lot line adjustment with the adjacent parcel, under the same ownership, and is also under development by, under a separate planning application. So let me walk you through the lot line adjustment. So Lot 9, in the lower corner highlighted there in yellow, will take approximately 6,312 square feet from the adjacent lot. And what that'll do is essentially bring that lot into compliance. Within the residential hillside RH zoning district, lot, minimum lot size is determined by the slope. And so this is one of the more steeper slopes, therefore requires a little bit more of a minimum lot size. And that, there's a table within your staff report that indicates what the minimum lot sizes that were calculated for each of the nine lots. The project necessitated a mitigated negative declaration to evaluate the potential environmental impacts. Through that, 29 mitigation measures were included, which are also within your conditions of approval. The document was publicly circulated on October 16th, and one agency, Lafco, provided some comments, which we noted and responded to within the staff report. One item that was evaluated within the environmental document, as well as within the development footprint analysis that was conducted under the subdivision regulations, was the Royal Willow Stand on the southern, southeastern portion of the lot. Now, in order to allow parts of Lot 9 to be developed, a portion of the willow stand is proposed for removal. However, a mitigation area to the west, towards the bottom of Lot 8, is proposed that will be protected by a recorded conservation easement as a non-development area, and will be delineated by a split rail fence to permanently denote the physical boundaries of the willow stand. Now, in the response, some comments have been received thus far in regards to tree removals. First thing, I want to clarify that in error, we indicated that 63 trees were to be removed. The applicant has clarified that the 63 was the number of trees that were inventoried on the site that was provided as part of an arbor support. And I believe Janet has provided to that, to you. So of the 63 trees that are on site, only 35 are proposed to be removed. And so of that, 10 are indigenous native species, 17 are eucalyptus trees, and eight are the exotic, non-native trees. All the trees within the inventory were considered to be in fair to poor quality. So, one of the other things that staff wanted to do in looking at the conditions of approval, we wanted to expand on the mitigation measure that talks about trees, to throw in some condition that's consistent with other projects that we've done to indicate, you know, specify the type of trees to be replanted and such. So before you is a recommended, additional recommended condition to be included, and for the record, I will read it. Prior to the final recordation, applicant shall submit a tree replanting and vegetation plan that includes the location, size, and species of proposed tree plantings to be reviewed by the, and approved by the Community Development Director, that, one, shall be native, non-invasive, exotic species; two, that are fire-adapted and water-efficient, willow compliant; and three, that attempts to meet the true replacement requirements of the RHDR zoning district, 3 to 1 ratio, as closely as possible, up to the carrying capacity of the site. The plan shall adhere to condition 39, mitigation 18, that requires sufficient sequestration in the amount of CO2 sequestered by the existing 35 mature trees proposed to be removed through replanting in the size and quantity suitable for the capacity of the subdivision. So, with that, staff does recommend that the planning commission certify the mitigated negative declaration, and approve the major subdivision, grading permit, lot line adjustment, and street name assignment. And with that, staff will entertain any questions the planning commission may have. The applicant's team is also available to take any questions as well, and clarify any points.
Thank you, James. Questions?
Commissioner Henze?
First, I want to say, I sure liked that drone shot. First time I seen one here.
I apologize, I'm raising the bar for some of my colleagues, so. We, I mean, we actually utilized that earlier this year to kind of get a better overhead view of the, of the willow stand, to see if we could kind of delineate a little bit clearer with that. And then, as I was putting the presentation together, I realized we had a shot to reuse, so.
No, one thing the drone shot didn't show is how much of a drop-off there was from the street down.
Yes, that's correct. And I actually looked at it from the other angle, and you don't get the appreciation of some of the topography that occurs roughly around Lot 9, is again, the one that's more steeper of the two.
So I got just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Any reason why the two eucalyptus are remaining? Because, one, I see them as a fire hazard, and, two, they dropped limbs unexpectedly?
Commissioner Henze, I'll let the applicant go into detail on with their selection with some of the trees. I know that majority of them that are along Jefferson are to allow, facilitate access to those lots, but why the two remaining, I will let them.
Where are those two eucalyptus to remain? Where are they? Do we know that? We can let the applicant tell you in your presentation.
Okay.
When the lots are developed, are they going to be all developed the same time?
I believe they are, but I will also let the applicant indicate what their intentions are with the developmental schedule.
If they are, I was just wanting to know if they're using a unified housing design or they're unique in each one?
Yeah, I'll let them do that, but also I will note that this is within a design review district, so all the houses will be going through the design review process.
I couldn't hear the last part?
Design, this district is within a, with the Emerald Lake design review district, so all the houses will have to go through a design review process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Remesas?
Yes. I wish we would have had the drone view for the last presentation. Yeah, I think it should be part of the, every, every report coming up.
Video?
Yeah.
And I apologize for the precedence I've been setting.
We feel like an armed guard on the way out.
The question about the tree replacement, that I believe is a 3 to 1, and the language is to, to replace as feasible, as many trees as possible on, in the lots. But I, it's always been my concern that I don't want to see any canopy loss. So I wonder, we've talked about this before, about the, you know, the applicant's always trying to work with other organizations to, if there's not feasible in the, in the areas where it's going to be developed, to send some trees over somewhere else, to try to keep up with the canopy replacement. Because I think too many times we have too many trees lost that cannot be replanted in the same area. So, just a thought. That's a comment that I have.
So I think that's contemplated in our new tree regulations. Some of the challenges we face are finding the sites that would be the recipient of these trees. And there's been suggestions, well, they could be used in parks or in the public roads. That requires the Department of Public Works to be in favor of planting the trees and maintaining them, or the Parks Department agreeing to that. So it's an idea that's been discussed. To my knowledge, it hasn't been required.
Yeah, because I remember that we talked about that, and I thought it was going to be part of the new requirements. But I'm thinking, there are a lot of, you know, organizations that are in the business of planting trees. And I think that they may have, at least they should be contacted to approach them about if they have, you know, places that they may want, they may want to plant some trees, not necessarily just parks and lakes and stuff like that. So, some thoughts.
If I could follow up on your comment there? Because you made me think of something. Is, when I went along Jefferson, this is really at the transition from a wooded area to a less wooded area. You know, when we think about the tree ordinance, this is not specifically to you. Maybe we could even offer like oak trees to neighbors as maybe part of the condition, because it affects the neighborhood directly, where maybe they wanted to have more trees. You know, have, not everybody can afford an oak tree. But you know, you say a native tree, you could have one in your front yard, which would also benefit, maybe part of a concept, and just throwing this atop my head, without a lot of deep thought.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ketchum?
Let the applicant.
Okay, okay. I have some questions. Okay. As soon as I can find you. Okay. So, so was this just an error? About 63 trees versus 35?
That is correct. So through, through life of this project earlier this year, there has been a couple of other authors involved with the report. So that was just an oversight on that. But again, 63 came from the total amount of trees within the arborist's report, so that was just sort of the, the error that was made.
Does that mean the total lot has only 63 trees?
Currently, the total lot has 63 trees.
Okay.
At the moment. So the arborist's report in, took an inventory, and took the conditions of the tree. Of the 63 trees that are currently on the site as we speak, 35 are proposed for removal.
Understood. Yeah, not just a shock factor here.
Yes.
Because some correspondence was very concerned.
Correct.
The residents were very concerned about that. There's no mention of, no. Question. Scratch what I said. The final, they say after final recording, there's a mention of final recording several places in the report, right? So between now and the final recording, there seem to be a whole lot of things that have to be done. Is that correct? Is my assumption correct there?
Commissioner Ketchum, that is correct. There's a number of items that we will hold the applicant to, to prior to recordation, as that is an important benchmark in order to move on.
Okay. So, so in case this is approved, is there any recording that's done? What is it? Is it just what we say in the recommendation, staff recommendation, that's what?
So when we talk about final recordation, what we're talking about is recording the final subdivision map, which then enables the lots to be sold independently. And so before we actually create new lots that could be sold off, we want to make sure that certain conditions are complied with. The conditions as a whole are part of the record. And so the recordation of the subdivision is specific to the parcel map, whereas the conditions of approval stand by themselves and will be implemented by staff, both before the map is recorded and afterwards.
Okay. And before the final recordation, the lots, lots could be kind of re?
No, no, this, what you're seeing is the tentative map right now, and that will not change.
That will not change, okay.
Just by way of explanation, I think the, the terms that are used by the subdivision map act for major subdivisions, where there's a tentative map and a final map, if you use just sort of the colloquial understandings of the words tentative and final, you could be misled about what's really going on. Tentative doesn't mean subject to change. It just means that it hasn't vested the right to sell the lot separately yet. That's the only thing that's really tentative about it. There are some engineering and other sort of technical concerns that happen on the back end of the map process, but most of the planning concerns are loaded at the front end on the question of approval of the tentative map. And that's, that's, that's the first step in the process.
Okay, thank you. So, and it says it, that would, final recordation would take place in two years, like they have two years to do that. Is that correct?
There is a deadline by which they're supposed to complete the process, but there also are ways of extending that deadline. And occasionally, the state legislature will, if there's an economic downturn, pass a law that says that all the tentative maps that are pending as of this date will be extended by a period of time. So it's all basically designed to make sure that what the decision-maker thought was going to happen happens within a reasonable timeframe. It's not always necessarily exactly two years, but it's within, it's so you don't wind up with a tentative map that stays on file for decades before the projects actually get built.
So, but it can be done, that record, final recordation can be done before two years?
Yes.
Within two years, but yeah.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, too. And this condition that you have added, the condition 21, that would become part of the condition of approval, is that correct?
Yes, in addition to any clarifications regarding the true removal amounts. I believe there is one more condition that indicates 63 that as part of your approval, that will be clerically changed to 35.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? And please state your name. And you have 15 minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Eric Zweig. I'm the Director of Planning with Edenbridge Homes and Jefferson 10 Investors LP. I'm here this morning with my partner Kirk McGowan of McGowan Development, as well as Dan McLeod, our civil engineer. Kirk has been involved in this project since March of 2011, when it was initially proposed. For various reasons involving the family that owned the property at that time, things were postponed. Edenbridge became involved in late 2017, and we have been working with staff and our team of consultants on the environmental studies for this project since that time. So spent most of 2018 and 2019 getting our sort of studies updated on the project, including the traffic study that placed the roadway alignment where it is. And also getting our arms around the grading, because we are a builder, in addition to a land developer. And it is our plan to build all these nine homes at one time, all, you know, on SPAC. And so we needed to put a little bit more thought into the grading and present the project to you as one development, rather than as a new roadway to be put in and the lotting created, and then come back with nine individual lot grading plans. So that's the approach that we have taken to this project. It is our hope, if we are successful in the, all the sort of engineering steps that need to take place to get to that recorded final map, that we will be grading in the spring or summer of next year and complete the entire project in 2021. Obviously, that's dependent on how long it takes us to get through the engineering and design review and permitting processes, excuse me, for the houses. There are, we will approach these as custom homes. We may have three or four basic sort of plan types that we modify across the nine lots. There are some down-split plans, there are some upsloping plans, and there are some side-to-side splits. And I think we have one lot that is flat. But at this sort of size of home, I think, and, and level of home, we will be approaching this on a custom basis.
What style are you going for?
Well, I think, we have not determined that yet, in all honesty. We have built in the Palomar Oaks area before. We have also built down in Redwood City, and Los Altos Hills, and some other places on the peninsula. My, I think we will have some craftsman-style homes. I think we may have some sort of more Mediterranean-style homes. I think we will have possibly prairie.
Okay.
Yeah, no, really, we're gonna, we're, each one of these lots is going to receive the treatment of a custom home, I think. But the, you know, the difference with a builder like us is that we're going to try to execute in a production manner, building them all at the same time.
Excellent, thank you.
You know.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, it, it's most likely, as you look at the site arrangements, that we will build the homes access directly off of Jefferson with individual lot driveways first, which would be lots 1, 2, and 3, because those won't rely on the completion of the new roadway for utility servicing. And then we'll roll into the cul-de-sac and do 4 through 9. We are also building on the property next door right now, one single-family home that is the subject of the lot line adjustment with this proposal. Happy to answer any questions. I can maybe speak to a couple of the things that I heard in your comments. The eucalyptus trees, the two that we are not proposing to remove, one of them, they're both located on the sort of southern edge of the property, down below lots 7, 8, and 9. That is an existing county sanitary sewer easement. That's where sewer mains for the community make their way down the hillside. So, and both of these eucalyptus trees are located in that area, the two that we're not proposing to remove. When you make a removal inside of the sanitary sewer easements, you need to worry about damaging the pipelines, things of that nature. One of them is actually off property, on a neighboring property. It was difficult for our arborist to understand exactly where he was when he was cataloging the trees. That's the reason that those two are not proposed for removal. The other eucalyptus trees, the 17 that we are removing, the majority of those are along Jefferson Avenue and the traffic study that's been performed for this site, you know, says that those are needing to be removed for sightlines on the roadway with the new street intersection that we're proposing.
See, my concern with the eucalyptus is also besides the fire and the dropping of limbs, is once this gets built up to these, the ones I saw are getting to the end of their lifespan, so they're going to have to be come out anyway. And if they're buried deep behind a house, the expense to take it out to the homeowner is in the thousands of dollars, you know.
Yes, I mean, we, we have seen, we've seen those costs, certainly. You know, I think if the county sewer district were amenable to removal of the one that is in the sewer easement and on our property, we would certainly be glad to take that with the others. The one that's not on our property and that's on our neighbor's property, you know, that, that might open a can of worms.
Okay.
Yeah. The, with the question about the replacement planting, we will have a landscape plan and a tree, which includes tree replacement for the, you know, for the project. We'll be preparing that prior to the final map, working with James and staff to make sure that we are meeting the 3 to 1 replacement requirement and the carbon dioxide sequestration. That hasn't been put together yet, but it is my expectation that we will be able to accommodate those trees on the lots. And of course, we'll want to incorporate them into our landscape programs and selfishly have the lots have the benefit of those additional plantings, if we can. If we're not able to, and there's an off-site option, we would certainly be willing to, you know, go there to make sure we meet the requirement. I heard a question about recording documents. There will be a set of CCNRs for this project. We will, we will have a homeowners association that owns and manages the private roadway, as well as manages the responsibilities of these homeowners for the Willow Restoration Area and the conservation easement there, which will have a monitoring program with it, and a deed restriction that'll be part of the final map. So there will be, in addition to the county's normal enforcement mechanisms, there will be a governing body for this homeowner group that is charged with making sure we meet our requirements around preserving the willows there. If there are other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Yes.
The heck. I just, the eucalyptus and the sewer line, I'm not understanding why that would, removing them would upset the sewer line, because you just cut the, leave a stump. You don't mess with the stump. In order to prevent re-sprouts, you just treat the stump to kill the roots, but they, they'll take a long time to, I mean, I would think that the sewer people would be happy, because if they ever had to maintain the thing, the tree wouldn't be in the way, but just a thought. And the other thing, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the restoration plan for this creek and the effort made to, at least, statement that there will be an effort made about controlling invasives and restoring something really nice there. And, and I just contrast this today to the, the item on consent where the house biologist said, "Oh, it's hopeless. Can't get rid of the natives," you know. So this is refreshing, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it? You mentioned that you will start the grading in spring?
If the, we have to go through a process of a fully engineered plan, you know, within the constraints that are shown on the tentative map, the volumes and the areas of grading, et cetera. But we do need to go through a process. et cetera. But we do need to go through a process of developing that fully engineered plan that then we can hand to our subcontractors to go and construct. And that will need to be processed through the, you know, to the planning and building and public works department for the formal issuance of the grading permit. And it is our hope that we will get through that between this moment and, you know, April 15th, so that we can grade in the spring and, you know, complete the grading in the dry weather, and get all the drainage and the stormwater treatment measures in before the next wet season. That's the hope.
And that does not require the final recordation before you start grading?
Well, typically, it depends whether or not we want the final map to be recorded. If we want the final map to be recorded, then we either need to complete the work or post bonds for it, so that the county has assurances that it will be completed. Typically, we do want to record the final map, because there are loan contingencies relative to financing for the project that are met by the final map being recorded and the legal lots being created, which then creates a funding avenue for us to pay our contractors. So it will be our desire to record the final map as soon as possible. And that may be before the start of the grading.
So, and when you say complete by 2021, what would be completed by that time?
I mean, my hope would be the whole project, all the houses, done and out of the neighbor's hair.
Oh, the houses would be constructed?
That would be.
Like, if everything goes?
That's, that's the hope. I think it is the fastest-paced, most optimistic timeline that I can present. I just, I do want to make the point that we are, we are a production home builder. We build subdivisions all the time. We're not a one-off general contractor that's going to be doing one house and then rolling and doing the next one. We will build, you know, three to four of these at a time. And if the pace of sales is what we hope it will be, then we will have several phases going at the same time.
Okay. So you talk about, thank you for answering that question. You also talk about underground, underground water, sewer gas communications, storm drain lines.
Sure.
What about the other utilities? Are they already there? Because there's one home present.
So the home that is, is currently on lot one at the, what I would call the northwest corner of the site, does have sanitary sewer and water service. We will be keeping those services for the new home on that lot. We do need to gain approval for water service from the city of Redwood City, which owns the water mains out there, through a, through an outside service agreement with the city and a LAFCO process to have the city provide service for water to the remaining eight homes. We went through that process next door on the house we're building now, so we're familiar with it. And we will be approaching the city about that, and I believe that they, James has communicated with them in the tentative mapping process to make sure that that's not going to be denied to us. We also have been in communication with the Emerald Lake Heights Sewer Maintenance District, with the county sewer provider. They have approved the connection for these homes to their existing mains down in that, below lots seven and eight there. And they will be reviewing the final engineering plans as well. And we have our applications into PG&E, AT&amp;T, and Comcast for the design of the, you know, gas, electric, telephone, and cable services.
Thank you. One last question that I have is, in your landscaping plans, I would encourage you to consider green landscaping, water reuse. I believe those are some of the things that our regulations will start requiring. Is that correct?
That's correct, and there's a condition of approval that reinforces that requirement.
So we will be engaging a professional landscaping firm that will have all the landscaping be willow compliant. They're also going to be reviewing the biologist's report, which has a very clear list of which species should not be planted on site, because they're known to be invasive and could overtake the vegetation in the arroyo, which we don't want. You know, and we will be working with the biologists reviewing those landscape plans, and also in the implementation of the replanting of the willows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your answers. No other questions, right? So next, we will go to the public speakers. Do we have any speaker cards?
None.
None. Okay, so, since we have no public speaking car, public speaker cards, we'll close the public hearing. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any deliberations, discussions?
Just, just a comment or two. I like the, the idea that you're open, you're open to the idea of considering adding trees outside of your area, because I'm looking at ninety, you know, potentially 99 trees that need to be replanted. That's a lot of trees that I don't know if you'll have the capacity for that. But I think that if, if you're open to the idea of, you know, benefiting the rest of the neighborhood, it would be great so that we don't lose the canopy. So I would appreciate that. Beyond that, I don't have anything else.
Any other?
It looks good, Jimmy.
No, I'm just supportive of this.
Yeah, yeah, overall, I really, you know, it's a good project. I think we need housing at every level. And I think an additional nine houses, I think is a welcome addition to the housing stock that we, that we need.
Yeah, I really like your cooperative attitude towards working, working together and coming up with a good, good plan. So thank you, thank you for doing that.
Can we have the motion?
Recommendation?
Recommendation.
I'll make.
Go ahead.
Okay. For PLN 2011 00044, that the planning commission certified the mitigated negative declaration and approved the major subdivision grading permit, lot line adjustment, street name assignment by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval of attachment A, including the late submission.
The modification to, actually, the additional condition 21.
Twenty, yeah. Yes.
All right. With that, I will make the second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So the project is, the motion is carried out unanimously. Project is approved. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck, thank you.
Okay, so we move on to correspondence and other matters.
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no correspondence to report today.
Okay. Any study sessions for the next meeting?
So we have our next meeting on January 8th. We currently have two items on that agenda, and there's likely to be more added between now and then. The two items that are currently on there have to do with a construction of a new building and establishment of a commercial kitchen on Middlefield Road in North Fair Oaks. And then we also have a coastal development permit to decommission an abandoned oil well field on the coast side. So I am not recommending that we have a study session at the next meeting, but I would like to propose possibly a holiday lunch or breakfast, depending on what time we end the meeting, if you all are available.
Sure.
Sure.
January 8th, January 8th.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll plan on it. When the meeting concludes, we'll, I'll go out for a holiday celebration.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and send out more details before.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Directors' report?
Yes, I've got two items to report this morning. First, I wanted to let you know that yesterday, the Board of Supervisors adopted the first reading of the new building regulations. So the state building regulations, the new set, take effect on January 1st. The county is still working on what we called REACH codes, which are supplements to the building code to enhance energy efficiency and fire safety. That will be brought back to the board at a later date, probably in late January. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, we expect the Connect the Coast Side Public Review Draft to be released within the next week. And we have begun working with a consultant that is used by the county's Home for All Initiative, called Common Knowledge, to initiate public outreach on the coast side with regard to the Connect the Coast Side project. So you might hear of some discussions going on regarding that. The consultant is currently just interviewing local folks about their impressions about some of the circulation problems and some of the solutions they'd like to see in preparation for the soon-to-be-released plan, which will involve some more community engagement opportunities. So more to come on that as well. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Steve. So the next item is election for chair and vice chair. So do we have nominations for, we have one member absent. Do we want to still go ahead and do it, or should we wait?
I think it would be better if everybody's present. Can we move it for the next meeting?
Okay, with me?
Okay. Yeah, I really think that everybody should be present, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay. So we have agreement?
Should it be at the first?
Do we need to vote on that?
Should it be at the beginning or at the end?
You have a suggestion?
Do it at the beginning.
You have a suggestion?
I think council might have some advice.
Okay, yes.
The, the need is generally for somebody to preside at the meeting. And so it can happen at any time during a meeting, but if, if the idea is to have clarity about how the 2020 planning commission will proceed, it might be better to have it pushed to the beginning of the agenda.
But then, then the person who's elected the chair, that's what we are talking about, right? We do the election at the beginning? And do they come prepared?
It's sometimes the case that when a person gets elected, there's a bit of a rocky start, but it's, it, yeah, it could be either way, your preference. I'm not really, I guess, I'm not really recommending it one way or another. It's just, it's, it could be, it could be done either way.
What is your experience? I'm okay either way.
I think we've done it both ways, actually, yeah. So I don't think there's, you know, one specific way. But I would, you know, go along also with the recommendation from Mr. Fox.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, do it at the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
Okay.
Any commissioners' updates, comments, questions? None? I just have a couple of things. One is that on these, when we get these big reports, it would be nice to have a table of contents to go with it, so, so we know what is truly included in there, especially we got this report on item four, and just, just kind of navigating through it would be helpful.
Yes.
Because I know that the planner, project planner knows it inside out, but we don't. We are looking at it for the first time.
Understood. I'll work with my staff to make that change.
On that, in that vein, I would think, particularly because this last project, if you could split it and have the NEGDEC and its attachment separately, there was some confusion, because the NEGDEC has some, has attachment letters that are not the same, as well as the staff report. And so I know the MCC wanted to post it, and they divided it in the wrong place, whatever. It's easier, because of the duplication in the NEGDEC. Somehow, it seems easier, since you've already posted it.
I understand.
If it's bulky. That was just a suggestion.
And, and the second thing I have is, we had, earlier in the year, we had talked about this planning commission academy, that, so as soon as you have more information about that, we can find out who is interested in attending, and we can proceed with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You can just say it.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.